Virtually seven o'clock.
Virtually.
On Thursday, September fifteenth, I'm gonna call the Dunbarren Board of Selectmen in order. All three selectmen present. We got the town administrators here, chief of police is here, and according for the public, we have Mr. Lee Martel. Okay. Gentlemen, we have some minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September eighth, twenty twenty-two.
As amended, Dave?
Yep, as amended.
Okay.
Aye, second.
Any discussion on those?
They don't seem well-written.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up the public comment. It's our first rule for public, it's a form where we can just sound off.
I'm Robert Pike, I live in ninety-one Peaslee Road, New Hampshire, and I have no comments at this time.
Okay. Chief, you're on the agenda numerous times tonight.
Let's share him, share him.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Okay, we're gonna go right to Zachary Drive. We have a basically a change.
We're gonna accept.
Deed, we're gonna accept the deed, but I think
Open space subdivision.
Exactly, but the deed needed to be, have some language, it was explained to me that the fishing game chimed in and they wanted all sorts of covenants added to it to make it safe for various forms of wildlife and all that kinda stuff and pollution and so they gave us recommended language, it's been so incorporated. And so I have no issue with that. Gentlemen, did you have a chance to see that?
I didn't make a film, you'll read it quickly.
Okay.
Bob said he would be glad to be here and answer any questions if you had any or give you
Essentially, this is Zachary Drive and he's donated open space to support the subdivision. And the open space is needed to the town as part of, as part of the subdivision.
And it's about twelve and a half acres.
Well, twelve would be exact, it's a
Twelve point five sixty.
Thank you. And the delay on this was the, we had to get, as I said earlier, the fishing game to chime in and give us some recommended language to protect various forms of wildlife.
He's landing turtle again.
Don't make it, don't, don't laugh.
There's nothing, oh, actually, there is a signature page to the board and I am a notary if you decide you wanna sign it tonight, Bob.
Bob, yeah, Lean will notarize it for you so you don't have to make an extra trip in.
Thank you.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Is there water on that property? I'm just curious if there's a water body of water or if there's a
Is it open to public?
Yes, yes, I think so.
There's no vernal pools, there's nothing. Fishing game now, as of February one, if you come up on a heritage hit, literally, I shouldn't buy a piece of land till they negotiated them. In two thousand ten, there was a turtle seen somewhere near this area. And I, I don't wanna make light of it, that's the way the game is played today, so.
I was just curious if there was a small body of water that I didn't know about, you know?
He's looking for a potential fishing spot, that's all.
The only, there's no negative for the town of Dunbarren.
Yeah, right.
The positive is that I'm gonna send Mr. Belanger out there and every seventy-five feet, he's gonna identify the conservation land that the town of Dunbarren owns. So it's a, it's positive that way.
Right, right.
And we'll put up placards every seventy-five feet and, and that will be it, so.
That's great.
Yeah, that is good, actually, we probably should've done it at the planning board.
I was, I was on the planning board when this went through and the conservation commission isn't looking for small pieces all over.
Right, right, right.
I felt it was important to the town to take that piece of property because so many neighbors on the arc of that road use that property basically in their backyard. And with the new development, if the town didn't take it over, the people in that development could've used it for their, you know, uses and the people that already lived there on Zachary Drive wouldn't have been able to use it, so I thought it was fair for the old town people to use it.
In hindsight, David, I have to agree with fishing game that it now turns out that it may be or maybe not a great spot, so in hindsight, that was a good rule.
Yeah, because it's, it's in the middle of property, gives both a butters reasonable use of that land.
Yeah, right.
Okay, then we're gonna make a motion to approve this, the acceptance of this land.
You want, you want to make the motion, do it to me and I'll
I'll let you read it, Dave. I'll let you read the cover page. That's I'll make a motion to accept this corrective claim deed offered by Grapevine LLC, a New Hampshire limited liability company with mailing address of ninety-one Peaslee Hill Road, Bo, New Hampshire, oh three, three, oh four. For consideration paid grants the town of Dunbarren, um, New Hampshire Municipal Corporation, having a mail address of ten eleven School Street, Dunbarren, New Hampshire, with quick claim covenants as follows. A certain area of land herein referred to as the property being unimproved land consisting of approximately five thousand four hundred and seventy, fifty-four seventy, four eighty-one square feet situated in Dunbarren, town of Dunbarren, county of Merrimack, state of New Hampshire. Being known as open space lot on plan entitled open space plan, development plan, tax map H four, block three, block three, Grapevine Road and Zachary Drive, Dunbarren, New Hampshire. Merrimack County prepared full pipe construction company dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Prepared by J.E. Belanger Land Surveyor, P L L C. Hereafter the plan recorded in Merrimack County Registry of Deeds, plan number two zero two two zero 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 nine nine two six as more particularly described on exhibit A attached herein. There you go.
Aye, second.
Okay, the discussion was, the only thing is, uh, exhibit A, the other restrictions are quite lengthy and they're something, they'll be open for the public to anyone to view them. But they're just, the recommendation, the recommended writing from the New Hampshire Department of Fishing Game. Any questions on those? Should we read it? Anyone wanna read? I don't wanna read that, it's gonna be too long. But they're open to the public for anyone who will wish to see them.
They're standard like Bob says now in most of the subdivisions.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sir, come on up and your signature. Lean, if you'd be so kind to
Do I need my driver's license? Okay, that's town of Dunbarren. Do you want to place like you're signing it?
That's correct.
I hate to mess it up at this point.
Yep, I'll take care of that and if the board wants to sign that one.
What do you wanna do, Adona? Take care of recording and everything after this paperwork?
Yep, yep.
Am I duly ordered or authorized this?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Thank you, just let Adona go on our paperwork.
Thanks for telling, Bob.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You guys doing a great job on my subdivision, Bob Pike, I don't know if I met you.
Oh, I know what you're doing. Nice to meet you in person.
Okay.
Yeah, we try to poke down there, just keep an eye on things.
It's, it's been good, so, Bob.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Thank you.
So we're required one signature. You guys love them.
I was gonna say, just you out to drive.
Exactly. Pass it to Lean, please. Okay, we're gonna continue on, we have, uh,
Road widening dedication.
Yes, it's, if you recall last meeting, we had a discussion on this on Guile Hill and we were concerned about some of the wording on there. And the wording was, um, it was, it was actually a lease to the town. And we changed it to dedicated to the town. Am I correct?
No, wasn't lease.
Wasn't lease, or was it a actual correct word?
It was easement.
Easement.
Yeah, rather than easement, it was changed to a dedication. Which is means given, in other, all other words, given to the town. And the, the change, has been changed appropriately?
So we have to make a motion.
We do. Dave, you're on a roll tonight and I'm not gonna make your, uh, this other gentleman read, so.
Not these anything ones.
No.
Okay. Wanna make a motion to accept the road widening deed from Strategic Contracting Company LLC, a New Hampshire limited liability company having mailing address, P O Box four seven six six Manchester, New Hampshire, oh three, one oh eight. Consideration paid hereby grant and convey to the town of Dunbarren Municipal Corporation with the mailing address of ten eleven School Street, Dunbarren, New Hampshire, oh three, oh four, six. With click claim covenants, the following described conveyance to widen the public way. A certain parcel of land situated in Dunbarren, town of Dunbarren, county of Merrimack, state of New Hampshire, shown on the plan entitled nine lot subdivision plan, tax map H five, block one, lock one, Guile Hill Road, Dunbarren, New Hampshire, Merrimack County, owned by Strategic Contracting Company LLC dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Prepared by J.E. Belanger Land Surveyor, P L L C, recorded in Merrimack Registry of Deeds as plan number, found and described as follows. The description of the boundary is on there. And I make a motion that we accept this road widening deed.
Aye, second.
Any further discussion on this, except that discussion, we aren't gonna approve it, but it's gotta be notarized by the
It's actually the only, the owner of the property has to sign.
Exactly. Okay, so we're all set on that, we just pack it to pass it to Lean for action? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for getting that, the wording changed, Lean. Okay, uh, we have, we have, we have some issues to talk about, uh, not issues, just, um, some lighting estimates we have to talk about, I'm gonna let Dave address those.
Can I have the three mics? I'd like to take them out of order.
Okay, we have three of them, Dave, start with.
Pick the one you want. I wanna do the ones that have to be done that I know and then we'll go to the lesser of the needs.
Okay.
A light upgrade. Okay, I'm gonna start with the fire alarm. Um, on the town hall building, we had some discussion, um, over the phone with me last week in reference to these. Our fire alarm in the existing town hall building where the renovation is going, um, does not have enough spots in it to do both the new lula as well as the, uh, fire pump down in the basement. Uh, that panel was replaced a few years back, maybe ten years ago, um, with the fire department. And, uh, in talking with Chief Wigan on site, he was excited to have this upgraded. The new ones can be controlled by your phone and they also, when you go into the building, you can shut off the different zones in the building without taking the fire alarm off the entire building. So say something was going on with
A sensor.
The sensor on the lula, he could shut the lula off and go home for the night, know the building was covered. This existing one, if you shut the panel down, it shuts the entire building down. So he was very excited to have the, uh, the ability to have it on his phone as well as the new sensors in there. Unfortunately, it's pretty expensive to change it out, but it is part of the process of putting that in and um, I had to even talk about, talk about it last week, but if they do that smaller lula up on the stage up there, that would need to be wired to it as well. So, um, let me give you the
Which quote is that?
This is the one for the, um, to replace the fire alarm panel. Uh, you want quote number?
Yeah.
Forty-six seventy-seven.
I didn't write that down, but what, it's for the swap of the
Yeah, yes, this, this quote is to provide labor and materials for the following, swap the F A C P out for an addressable panel to accommodate new sprinkler and pump zones. The total on this estimate from the, and this is the Irish Electric Corporation. I met them on site and this is the company that is doing the rest of the work in the building. So all of the new fire uh, alarm wires and the, through the red ones as you saw during construction, will need to be wired into this as well. Um, the total on this is ninety-nine ninety.
We're ten dollars less than you thought.
Yeah. Yeah. So this is something I don't think, we can't do without, so.
I make a motion, we accept the bid for nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for the electrical swap of the panels and with an addressable panel for the new sprinkler system with pump zones as, as presented.
Aye, second.
Do they have a signature on the light?
We do, just, we do a key design.
We're open to discussion, for discussion now. Um, funding, we still have enough funding in it, but
I've given you all a report of the current balance of our, um, government building maintenance account. Currently, there's fifty-one thousand fifteen dollars. I know the board had voted to earmark approximately thirty thousand for
For these types of things, any upgrades and
Well, not necessary, no, this is separate, but because it's necessary for
The construction, if there was any overages.
Very good, isn't it for, to, to, because we need it for the sprinkler system?
Yes, yes, but let's talk exact numbers now. Because it's still an ongoing project.
Well, it's out there now.
No, but it is, uh,
But we're not holding the money aside anymore 'cause we're towards the end of the project.
Exactly. Okay, so it doesn't hurt to say it now because we're there. I just don't wanna sign something and then find out I have a bounced check.
You mean we would be bouncing a check?
Yes. No, I, I'm happy for them, okay. So we're good, all in favor of this?
On that?
Aye, aye, okay. Next one, David.
Okay, two more. Yep, I'm separating, I'm going to the, I'm going to the one for the fire pump next. Attached is our standalone estimate for the fire pump work. Now, this work, we always knew we had to pay for.
Right.
Um, so we're having a sprinkler system with a fire pump installed by one company, the electrical portion was always our portion. And I thought it'd be best to use the company that was doing the addition anyways, although the electrical work from the new addition needs to go into this. Um, I have a quote here. This quote is the following quote for electrical work at the library, provide labor and materials for the following. Install a new hundred amp meter and disconnect for the fire pump. Provide a two-hour rated feeder cable to the controller. Um, also in this, doesn't state on his quote, but it includes outside a four hundred and fifty amp disconnect which is required for the fire pump. That's gonna go on the building.
That's not optional, that's a requirement.
Yep, so these are all requirements, as was the underground piping for that fire.
And for, for the record, that was, um, in order to support the fire system, which is separate from the building construction.
Yeah.
Understand that?
So the, the first quote you gave was a, a work order change, is that what that was, or just?
Nope, the first one I gave was a, well, I read what it was and I already gave back to Mike, but it was for the fire alarm.
No, I understand, so we've approved this coming from building maintenance.
Yep, right.
Are they gonna bill us separately from the Chicoine bill?
They are, just like we can bill we just paid.
Okay, did I just leave that?
And I did check with Gary Chicoine, it's, he owns the company and he said he's fine with not putting his percentage on these.
Okay.
Okay.
This one wouldn't have been the case anyway, but the other ones could've been.
Right.
Okay, this one
I just wanna make sure that we have consensus, we, we wanna approve it, but we have consensus of moving forward with that.
Yeah, we do have a motion on it.
Okay, let's have a, um, you wanna read it, go ahead.
So we need to make a motion to approve labor and materials for the following. Install a hundred amp meter and disconnect for the fire pump. Provide a two-hour rated feeder cable for the controller and a four hundred and fifty amp disconnect for outside. The total on this is ninety-seven twenty-five.
I'll open up, I'll second that, open up for discussion.
And like Mike said earlier, this had to be done irregardless, this is part of the sprinkler system, not the building addition.
Yes, and for the public, uh, we pursued, we pursued a sprinkler system for our building regardless of the upgrade to the town hall slash library there. Because we saw what happened in Hopkin, Hopkington. We didn't wanna see that happen to our building, you know? And that was the reason we pursued, um, sprinkler system.
Hopkington, Hennaker, all kinds of fires.
I'm, go ahead.
So this is all for the addition?
No, it's for the entire building, fire suppression. Now, there was, at the same time
Yes, 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 I understand.
We move forward, at the, the construction started and we move forward on a parallel path, installing fire suppression.
I do understand all that, but it's all in the same project, the, the town, the old town hall.
We were, we were doing, same, same location, different, different
So my, get, my question is, you couldn't have combined that and get a, and estimated from someone else to do those two projects?
No, uh, let me probably try to answer that. As part of the sprinkler system for the building, meat code, we had to cover sprinklers for the basement.
Right.
First floor, second floor, and attic.
Yep.
And we as selectmen decided to do that.
Right.
Whether we put the addition on the building or not.
Right.
We waited to use the electrician that was on the building because he's already got all the wires from that new part of the building that need to be wired into this pump system anyway.
Yeah, the, the actual fire, uh, suppression equipment was a separate contract, not, had nothing to do with the, the building upgrade. Because if the building upgrade, uh, was
Didn't happen.
Declined, the town
We were still
We were still
I'm just saying, so it's one electrician and he's gonna get these two projects without bidding on anything.
He did bid on him, he gave us a bid done wrong.
Well, he's the only bid.
Yeah.
Right, he's saying that typically under ten thousand, we have to get multiple quotes.
No, under ten thousand.
Is what?
We don't have to get multiple quotes, over ten thousand, we have
Yeah, right, but, but I hear it often, I hear you talk often to the other departments that don't just get a single quote, get more than one price. And here we are getting one person who's already there to just do two projects there, and I understand they're separate projects, but they're both the same, one in the same
But they're intertwined enough where I don't think we should have a separate electrician weaving into his job.
I don't know.
You know? That, that's something, I agree, it's unknown, we could've
You're almost twenty thousand dollars there, you know?
Right, but the thing is, um, when you get two different contractors, you got one electrician working with another electrician, there's, we didn't wanna have any competition between the two and
I do understand that, I do understand that, I'm just, you know, wondering, is that like a good policy to, you know, 'cause again, you're, you're telling every other department, I don't wanna hear just one price. I wanna hear you shopping, and that's for lower numbers even, you know?
I guess the only exception here is that the electrician was already on site, we're using an existing, uh, the electrician, half the project was not, uh, our bid to pursue, because it was a subcontractor of the, uh, of this, of the entire renovation. We're just utilizing him to continue it.
Yeah, right, the only thing I, I see, I hear, that I can see that it would be a reason for this is for expediency.
Yes.
That, that, I'm gonna tell you one other thing, if you looked at the commercial amount of fire alarm wiring in that building, uh, there was huge snakes of red wiring. And I couldn't believe how much fire alarm wiring went into a, you know, two-floor little addition in there. And if you use a different electrical contractor at that point, he doesn't even know where the runs go to that are going up there now that are all hanging down there, but the electrician on site does know where that all is going, so.
Just doesn't look good, you know?
Well, it was, we only had the option of really, um, of say twenty thousand we approved tonight, only ten thousand of it was really discretionary. The, the first ten thousand was part of the, um,
The bid, the original bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay. So we had one, one which was discretionary, discretion was, since he's on site.
Yeah, right, no, I understand what you're saying, I just, you know, just burning up, focusing on something there, you know?
So noted.
Okay.
Okay, bring it back to the board and, um, we have a, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last one, Dave.
Now, this next one's optional. This next one's optional. I had some mics on me reaching out, 'cause I think I offered, um, there was some talk about Casano's doing certain things on the second floor of the existing building. Right now, there's no lighting up there, where there was a fire or anything, there was no lighting on the second floor, which we knew about when it was going on. So again, having this electrician on site, um, last week I brought him in there, I said, what's the most minimal amount of lighting we could put up here and still be able to see when we have a meeting? And our discussions went back and forth because, uh, my original thoughts were we'd have the old hang-down lighting to make the place look more, um, aged, to make it look more authentic. And then it came to my light that if we do a tin ceiling down below the existing ceiling there, if you put all these permanent fixtures in where the lights are and then it has to be moved over, you wasted all that money. So in talking with the electrician, they make new LED six-inch cans that get installed, I think Justin's familiar with them, they put them in his house. Every new house I see now gets these cans put in with continuous wiring on the backside of them. They're LED, they take very little voltage, they're very bright. And, um, so we calculated out twenty of them. Uh, five rows of four, going from front to back and being able to be switched on and off or dimmable. And then we looked at the old wiring in there, which is very limited, but it's on two, two conduit wiring, which is illegal to use anymore. And, um, he said, one nice thing is we have a brand-new two-hundred-amp panel upstairs on the stage for any new electrical use up there, which was part of their project. So that was great, so he's gonna put the switches next to the panel on the stage for the lighting. But what he's gonna do is he's gonna go over to the other side of the building where you enter into the doors and he's gonna put electronic switches there that don't need any wiring to them at all, they will be rent from the other first box. So, um, you can go into the building and turn those switches on and the lights will come on. Um, and then I looked at the stair entryway with them, when you come up to the top of the stairs, there was a fire enclosed drywall system put at the top of the stairs to break the fire. Um, there's no lighting that was put in when they did that either, so a lot of things were short-sighted when they did it, but there's no lighting there, so you get to the top of the stairs and before you get into the great room, there's no lighting, so we looked at that and that is the old tin ceiling still. And instead of getting into the tin ceiling, that drywall wall that was just there, you could drop power down into that and put wall sconces on there. Two in one area and one in the other to light that entryway up before you get into the great room coming up from the old set of stairs.
The only thing I, I had concern with is sconces, he said we have to supply the sconces and, uh,
I'm gonna ask him to supply the sconces because the sconces are already, he's already buying some for this part of the building.
Make a match.
I'm gonna make a match.
I, I was, that was my concern when I saw the bid.
I saw that too. Um, 'cause we don't wanna be picking out sconces either for walls, whatever they picked, the architect picked.
Keep it very similar.
So in doing that, I asked him to price that out separate because this is above and beyond anything that's required. Although we can't really use that building without lighting and as we can see, it's getting darker every day, so. Um, this estimate, to provide labor and materials for the following, to install twenty LED wafer lights, provide install two sets of, he calls them Costa switches with remote Pico switches and install three wall sconces in the old second floor hallway. And this bid was seventy-three ninety-five. And again, that's the same of electrician as we use for the building.
No, it does not include the cost of the purchase of the three sconces.
I'm gonna see if I can get him to add those in there. Um, it will be after the fact if we accept this tonight, but
I, I'd say we can accept this tonight, but we need to have that in there, I would, I would estimate probably like maybe two hundred dollars of sconces, no more than two hundred dollars, I, I'm thinking.
I don't think they're very expensive.
I was gonna say, they can't be that much.
No, I don't wanna be no more than
I even bought a wall sconce forever, but they can't be too much money.
But I don't want little tiny ones, they gotta be matching the same ones, they gotta provide enough light from the staircase.
I did tell him that I wanted to be at least like hundred-watt ones because even though that area is small, it's dark little area there.
Also be on a dimmer anyways, if I do it for every Dave shared with me, he, he saw the number and then he was intimidated by the number, but then he divided the number of switches, another
By the cans.
Over to cans.
You know, I thought of those things, okay, say the, the, I don't know how much are you probably just bought for yours? I was thinking those things are maybe a hundred or a hundred and fifty each and then you're cutting them into drywall and then they connect those to, together with each other in a power, so it's pretty easy to do. But when I divided the number of, I mean, I gotta remember those ceilings are fifteen feet high, so you're on staging. And then you get up in the attic, you're going over all the sprinklers and all the HVAC we just put in there, the air handler, all of the, uh, different wiring that's in there already, it's, it's quite a bit of work.
I just wanted him to explain that because it's not as, it sounded like a huge, a dollar amount, but in reality, you can divide it by the twenty sconces, I mean, twenty lighting fixtures.
Yeah, actually, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Will you give him the three sconces for
I, I think I will, I think I probably will do that.
I mean, you can buy them in bulk.
Okay, so the thing is, the motions, I wanna make a motion on the floor that we accept the bid from
Irish Electric.
Irish Electric for seven thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars for the lighting of the second floor.
I'll second it.
Okay, and discussion, again, this is not part of the, uh, the, what was proved at town meeting, this is something separate, something that we knew we had to do along the way because there was no lighting on the second floor other than the candles.
And last year, we had agreed that even if that part didn't go on with the sprinkler system on there, we were gonna put lighting in that second floor, 'cause just the fire department goes in there in the middle of the night, you can't turn a light on. I understand if the power's out, that's one thing, they have emergency lighting, but this at least This at least give us lighting on the second floor. Uh, one thing I do wanna make a note of, this does not include any lighting on the stage.
Right, and the thing is, uh, if you call a town meeting, uh, we had a benefactor, I'll just keep it quiet for now, but we had a benefactor who's gonna donate lighting for the stage and. Uh, that's a work in progress and we're gonna be meeting in two weeks to to essentially talk with the benefactor and go from there.
Yeah, see what I consider providing.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing I, since we're on this, um, all in.
There you go.
Okay, do we, could I call, we're voting on that already? All in favor on the uh lighting for the second floor?
Aye.
Motion on the bid, alright. Okay, uh, since we're on electrical, Dave, the one thing that was bothering me was brought up earlier, the emergency lighting. The the lighting block, emergency lighting blocks, I know some of them on the first floor are shot, Mary's reported that to me, and uh, I know there's gonna be some emergency lighting required.
I know that for the new addition, all that emergency lighting is done already. So I think let's see what is done when they finish that part of the building and then.
Okay.
Um, we'll try and address those as we need them.
If we have some synergy, it may be worthwhile, I I know you pointed out to me, maybe to get the gentleman to look at some of our other emergency lights there.
Okay, we could.
Yeah, we have John last meeting coming up next week as well, that we have to go over uh the action items for.
Is John gonna be there?
And then Bill Ross?
He should be.
Yes.
I'll tell you what, uh, why don't you guys identify the areas? That we need, and we don't wanna replace them all if we can help it now. The areas that don't have them that we need them, and then I'll walk the electrical contractor through.
Yeah, I think the one was actually deficient, I mean defunct, it was inoperable.
Yeah, it's right by the bathroom there.
Okay.
We talked about addressing it at after construction.
Yeah, but the thing is, we may have some synergy here to save some dollars for the town.
Because I'm not sure, um, I know the new stair system will all be part of the job lit up. But when you go into the back of the room, I didn't even look up to see if there was a. One at the back of the room to go down the old set of stairs.
There is, but it's really old.
And and they're not using LEDs, they're using the uh incandescent, which dated and don't not as efficient.
Right.
So a- again, let's let's keep that on the table, I just, since you're talking.
You may have to set up a special walkthrough, we already did a walkthrough over the library a few meetings ago. Unless you.
Well, I'll just do it with John and the electrician.
Yeah.
And I, Dave, I appreciate you come back to us with a with a number, and the thing is, if it if it sounds unreasonable, we can uh, we can readdress, but. Uh, let's take advantage of the synergy we have.
One other thing, um. I thought about, since we're replacing the panel anyway, then I'm talking about the alarm panel now. Going back to the alarm panel. The alarm panel was in the entryway. Of the old library entrance, which is now gonna be used for closet. And so I mentioned to John Wigan to go in and see Mary and see. Um, if we could use that more as a closet and put the panel in another location. One thing I didn't think about is all the existing wires go to that panel anyway. But I'm thinking instead of facing it in the closet, facing it out into the library, that. Um, fire alarm panel.
It's labor intensive, you know, to move those wires.
Well, they're doing it, they're they're gonna.
Move it anyways.
But you know the wall is here.
Right.
So now the panel's on this wall. Instead, it'll be on the backside.
Okay.
So it's in the library now, not in the closet.
Okay.
So I'm gonna try and do that.
And won't that alleviate getting a remote and unseater panel or something he was talking about? Cause I thought if he couldn't access that. He had to get some remote enunciator or something.
Well, John said if it wasn't, if you like put the panel, the main panel down in the basement.
Oh.
Then you would do in the entryway a remote.
Enunciator.
Enunciator, so.
Okay.
That being said.
Yeah, I still have a few issues we need to work out.
Yeah, I don't think it's dollar wise issue, but where the panel is going.
Okay, okay. Alright, I think we're, could, any updates on the, I saw Mr. Jacoin at the at the voting.
Yeah.
Day and uh. Uh, very optimistic, I'm, he's looking forward as I am for ribbon cutting.
Just so people are aware that I I would say, looking at it. The drywall's all loaded, did they start hanging today, Mike?
I didn't, I didn't notice.
I know they were gonna start hanging any day now, I'd say they're about three quarters of the way done.
I still saw the, the door's still backwards.
The door?
Yeah. Is it, I saw a lot of plywood over there still with the entry and doors.
No, the reason that's done is cause they um, you notice they haven't poured the cement slab where the entryway is.
So they keep the door out of it?
Yes.
Okay.
They don't want to get.
I thought it was backward, okay, I stand corrected.
Um, the earthwork is starting, I think, next Wednesday.
Okay. Alright, any uh, any further discussion on, since we're talking about renovation, lean, do you have any concerns from your point of view?
Nope, the board is spoken.
Okay. Uh, okay, let's move on to the next item. We have the uh personal uh on-call wording for the um.
On-call appointments?
Yeah, uh, I think uh Chief gave some input, and I think Lean and Chief worked together, Lean's got a final draft for us to take a peek at. Uh, she's still a few, there's a few items on the personnel plan that which is still work in progress, but this is just another item that we can, she can close out.
Chief. This is specific right now to Brian.
Do you have a take? Yeah, I believe. Believe me correctly from Ryan, I think there's a few deputy positions here at the town that also get some type of a stipend.
Right, and I I remember when you guys each were doing a thousand.
Yeah.
It's a jerk change, it went to Brian, cause he's doing all year now.
So he and I are still on call, but because I'm salary, I.
Yeah.
I can't get that, so we shuffled that over.
At at some point, is is it gonna be split back up to maybe a thousand, thousand with two of your full timers or?
Potentially, um, I would need a another officer, um. Essentially, that's that's a supervisor to take on that responsibility.
I just wanna make sure that the wording in here allows you to go back and forth that way.
Yeah, I think we put, did we put up to two?
Yes.
So as as far as, I mean, we could have two being compensated, I would still stay in the rotation, so technically we have three, but I'm not compensated for it, which is fine.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, I think there's flexibility.
Dave, the additional appointments covered in the section may be identified from time to time, so it's flexibility there.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing I did notice that we had left out was the highway maintenance on-call, so rather than create a new section. Just changing the title of on, from uh. Um, highway winter maintenance on-call, just uh change the title and then include this language that would include.
On-call stipend duties.
On-on-call stipend.
And you added Deputy Director and Deputy Treasurer stipends.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
For our discussions earlier.
Right, right.
Okay, I have no problem with the language proposed.
I think it's, the the whole goal is to get, everything is black and white, so there's not a question that comes up and. Somebody's interpretation is different from somebody else, it's very clear. Yeah.
I have no problem, I think we have consensus to go with it, Lean, no vote is needed on that one.
No, cause we've already approved it, but I just was trying to clean up the wording, so.
That's fine, okay.
Good with that, then I will incorporate that, and the last item is related to elected official salary, so.
Right, that, remember that, Dave?
Yeah.
She's getting an N H M A to give us some input on that, but it's a work in progress.
We have grant to accept now, too, right?
Yes, we do. We have the grant master here.
Okay.
Alright, um, we received, uh, this is what reported by the chief, uh, we got a five that five K grant from. Office of Highway Safety to basically conduct extra traffic patrols, DUI, distracted trafficking between ten-one and nine-thirty. Twenty, so a full year starting October first through nine-thirty twenty-three. And basically these grants cover one hundred percent officers' time to conduct ex- extra traffic enforcement, it's a great opportunity for us for Denmark to address problem traffic theories and overall reduce the reduce. Motor vehicle crashes and dangerous driving behaviors. Uh, the grant is an amount, as I said, five thousand dollars, we have, this is a. We received, we have the money, Lean?
Yeah.
Or we have to sign paperwork?
I assume a quarterly reimbursement.
Okay.
And then the state cuts it to the town.
Okay, great.
And who is assigned for this one? We're gonna accept it as a board.
Yes, I think the board signs that, we have in the past.
Yeah, so.
I'm happy with you signing it, Mike.
I know you always are. Okay, so I I make a motion, we approve the five thousand grand from the New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety, uh, for. For the extra traffic patrols between ten-one twenty-two and nine-thirty twenty-two thirty.
I second.
All in favor? No, any further discussion of this, I stand corrected?
Nope, thanks for putting the work out.
Of course, grants.
Thank you.
So uh, this will, this will offset your need for more dollars to pay your folks by the next budget year?
Well, we'll see, we'll see. This is uh, some of the board members, we we've been getting these grants intermittently for probably the last ten years or so, we didn't get it. I think the last year or two, cause of COVID, the money kinda dried up, it all comes from federal funding. But uh, they gave us five thousand this time around, which I think is the most we've ever gotten.
I think a couple more like fifteen hundred.
Yeah, they were, they were relatively low, um, but this gives our guys a chance to get out there and solely focus on traffic, they don't have to worry about responding to calls. Or doing anything else, it's all extra duty for them.
Yeah.
So it really benefits the town, cause the state foots the entire bill.
Except for the taxes, right?
Those are included, FICA, SS Med.
It is on this?
Everything's included.
Wow, okay.
It's not like the fishing game.
Yeah, that's where it's completely different, yeah, I like that.
Lean, you gotta help me tell, this form is a little bit uh.
Well, he flagged everything, and he's usually very thorough.
So we have sub recipient signature one and, okay, name and title, okay. So I'm gonna call us the sub recipient.
Yeah. I believe each member of the board, I think, has signed it in the past, is that correct?
Yes, there's three, there's three, there were three sub recipients, gentlemen, so you're you're in the, you're on the hook tonight.
The contract's legit, I I went there.
Well, that's for D M Y, I'm not signed it.
The other thing this does too is those. Emails, Dave, that I forwarded you from the traffic studies that we've done.
Yeah.
This allot some extra time to focus on those areas.
Oh, cool.
To give those residents a little bit of peace of mind that we are giving some extra time and attention to those.
I think your letters were very well written to those residents, so.
Thank you.
And the authorized contract signatory?
I mean, it does, it does look like uh cars are going faster than they actually are.
Especially when you're you're standing still watching a car drive by.
And the new cars do go faster, easier than.
Yeah.
The old cars.
Yeah.
That's a matter of debate.
Well, not your car, Mike.
Does that need to be authorized?
Does uh appear so.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, okay, doesn't appear so, but it does.
Stay corrected.
I think it does.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Do you have any more for me or?
No, I think that's it.
I don't think there's a initial on the bottom page, but is it?
I'll give you this one back, Mike. These months are flying by, aren't they?
Mm-hmm. The days too, look at it's dark.
I'm gonna double look it over, have. Chief look it over.
Chief, come on up to the.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
You've got a signature, we don't wanna have, send it out and find out.
Yeah, sure, sure. Sorry, Dave, just needs your name and then your title.
Oh.
Section two, thank you.
Any directions?
I tell you, hate to be that guy.
Now, we have initials for everybody.
Good on the dates.
That's on the back page?
Yeah.
Initials?
Yeah, in the last two pages.
Okay.
All of us?
All of us.
So we have numbers?
Yeah, one thirteen one and then one thirteen two, please, thank you very much.
And I'll send you a scanned copy of this one.
Yeah.
This one for Justin?
Justin, will you pass that back just when we're done? I say grant master in a, in a very laudatory comment. That's not.
Okay, this one's done by all three.
You're one of the, you you're an expert at it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we are in good shape, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lean will memorize that, I think. I think that goes on the third time.
Okay, thank you for your support, appreciate it.
But you're not done yet, just don't go away.
Oh, no, I love you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the mailbox. Okay, um, this past week, um. We have the transfer station employee that already interviewed Mr. Timothy Davis, accepted the job. He has been scheduled for the fiscal, he's passed the fiscal, and so I'd like to make a motion, we officially um. Hire Timothy Davis. The transfer station assistant manager.
Part-time.
Part-time.
The state is ready to pay, don't you?
No, I don't have it.
Yes, step one.
Step one. At the, at the specified.
Eighteen dollars, I believe it was in the minutes.
Okay. Yes.
I think it was eighteen.
Eighteen even.
Yeah.
At the rate of eighteen dollars per hour.
Yeah, it is eighteen.
Second gentleman?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussions, I think Woody's reassured because uh, even with the more money we gave, he alluded to something this week that he may, one or other employees considering leaving. So, as I think as we've always concluded, that it's not about money all the time. All in favor of this particular one, this gentleman?
Aye.
Lean, if you could just continue to process him tomorrow?
Yep.
And not first thing in the morning.
He's scheduled for orientation tomorrow morning, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Alright, um. We have a letter from State New Hampshire Department of Revenue, Lean, what are they asking us for?
It's basically saying that there's a Senate bill that passed, um, Senate S D two thirty-nine, which is basically notifying the town that um. We are now required in must have perform annual audits. And provide the Department of Revenue a copy of the final audit. Which we are currently doing, um.
For the record, I've never seen it, any, every year we do audit for the census.
That's, that's correct, but now they have it um legitimized with the fee of a penalty. Two hundred fifty dollars a day, and I guess there were some communities, smaller towns, that didn't want to um.
Spend the dollars for.
Go through the audit, and a lot of it had to do with um. Sewer and water and other.
We do our audit yearly anyway.
Yeah, yeah, but it's just a.
A notification.
Notification for the town that we've been over.
Just uh, next item, oh, this past day, for initial update, we were. Uh, we got some complaints on um Long Pond Road referencing drainage in the road, I'm gonna pass these on to, I think Lean has already done that for me, passed on to the road agent. We're asking to come in at our next meeting and address these, and maybe do a side visit, see what they're all about. I understand there's a telephone pending, Lean called, uh, second complaint, same area.
Yeah, just down the street.
Just make sure that uh, road agent is aware of that.
Yeah, it's in this mailbox.
I'll do a drive-by sometime in the next week to take a look at it, I do, I do wanna say that, you know. Most everyone's driveways slash roadways washed somewhat this week anyway with the heavy rains we had, so.
I, we have a gentleman here who contests that all the time.
Well, I was gonna bring that up, please.
I was gonna say, if you drive around, you see there's quite a bit of rain.
I'm sure your officers.
Yeah, when we were checking your house.
How bad is that?
Uh, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, jaw dropping, jarring, you know?
Does she probably complain?
I just fixed it Tuesday, and of course the rain Tuesday night gets back at it.
Throw gravel.
Yeah, but they get the road pitched on the wrong side of the road, 'cause the drainage is on one side and it pitches to my side.
Okay, um, building, what did, uh, building have to share with you regarding our building inspector Lean?
I know that she sent this email later today that said she wants to wait to meet with us next week on potential new hires, but right now she has nobody and she's using the.
Okay.
Fire chief for the inspections now.
I'm gonna discuss it now, and discuss this, uh, it was brought to my attention that in the past, uh, selectmen were actually, um, if they were qualified, they could actually perform building inspections. I feel myself qualified enough to do it. Dave, you said, you said you would step up to the plate if you leave the.
And it's part of the RSA too, Mike, that.
Right.
In lieu of a building inspector position, all selectmen have the authority to sign building permits. When you do hire a building, um, inspector, that obligation goes to him at that point. The, the selectman still can do them if he is vacant or absent, but you've hired somebody for the position, so in lieu of not having anybody, the RSA states that any other selectman can do the inspection.
So, originally, her first email said that she wanted to meet with the board to discuss it, and then when I came down here and talked to her about it, I explained to her that the selectmen have the authority to fill in in the absence of an inspector, and, uh, she, and I clarified for her that you had mentioned you would step in.
Yeah.
And help, um, because you were the more experienced individual. So, at this point here, she is. She wants to follow up with continuing to advertise, she's asking for input, she's asking for support. She did in her email, which is in detail there, say that, um, she is, uh, shocked around to the different communities in the area and priced up the wages for that position, and she feels that that may be a deterrent for them to.
Is it on it indeed? I didn't see where she said that.
It was expired just three or four days ago, and I spoke with her about it. We wanna let it sit for a while, but she's got it through the NHMA town website, and then there's the Builders Association.
Maybe next week turn it on again.
She was, she gave some examples of, uh, what Bo charges, Bob, Bob, Mike shared that information, and, uh, like, sometimes a twenty-nine dollar versus forty dollar an hour.
Right, so there were a few on the last page that she's reached out to.
It will say that Bo was probably the highest paid one around this area.
Right.
And it is close, close to Bo's rate, according to this email.
So, I think it's worth discussing with Donna, I think is, um, I think, uh, if you need to, it's a, John cannot do it forever.
No.
And, and I think it's worthwhile, we maybe will address the, the sooner than later. You wanna have a special meeting to meet with her, I don't need, she doesn't stay long in the evening, I don't wanna have a special.
I think if Dave is willing to step in and, and do some reviewing, which would alleviate John where he's not available, I'll, um, he would be able to discuss it with Donna and.
And I don't mind doing some minor inspections of the foundation stage.
I don't feel I'm qualified at all, though, personally.
He'd be more of the framing stage, I could do some of the foundation stages and.
Okay.
But I don't wanna do any part of the.
Does it, Tom, does the selectmen get reimbursement for anything of this work, additional work?
No.
I'm just asking.
I don't believe so, unless they're filling the position.
I'm not looking for any sort of reimbursement.
No, but I, I wanna ask, I wanna ask, put the question on the table, I just wanna know for sure. I won't be surprised at the end when Dave gives me a bill for.
Forty dollars an hour. You don't wanna pay my rate, Mike?
I think it falls under that, um, description of your responsibilities, yeah.
Mike, get him some coffee.
Yeah.
Get a coffee, Skype and go, we'll be all right.
Well, just to let you know, that, the thing is, uh, the one thing I would stipulate though, uh, the reimbursement was for mileage. So, if you're making a few trips out, I think mileage would be something to consider.
So, currently, right now, John Wigan is filling in and on inspections, and has done some plan review today, but there's a lot of things that are pending, um, that she really needs someone to sit down and look at the plans in detail. Uh, when I mentioned the, um, mileage thing for John, and I realized he's using the fire department truck.
Yeah.
Which is town vehicle, so therefore he wouldn't be submitting any request.
But I'm thinking that any of these two selectmen would do it, they should be at least eligible for reimbursement for mileage.
Yeah, I don't really care about that either.
Okay, but I just, just put it on the table.
But no, I think you are right.
Okay, if it becomes excessive, bring it back to the board.
If John doesn't use the fire department truck then, he's more than willing to get reimbursed.
All right, um, but the thing is, uh, the question I have is, do we need to, uh, is a salary stipulated in our ad?
Let's talk with that, it will be, let me talk with her as I meet with her next week, and, uh, we'll try and look at that a little bit.
Right, uh, let's get it done in two weeks.
Very frustrated that we've adjusted a lot of departments' money, because money is not an issue when they're hired, then it becomes an issue. And then, and then you take care of it, and it's an issue all over again, and I just, I'm very frustrated with that. You know?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I can let Donna know to reach out to you and you'll, you'll make.
Get a time to meet you at computer.
Yeah, Donna, I'll stop and see her anyway, 'cause after her email today, I felt like I should stop and say hi.
Yeah.
Okay, the Dunbar Board Trustees will have the next meeting, uh, October third, at six P M, Dunbar Elementary Teachers' Room. And, uh.
That will be me.
Yep, although I'd like to not talk to Dave, not election regarding the construction, which would like to have a construction update. Dave, they want a construction update, you're probably the best for that.
Yeah, I did tell them I would go to their next meeting, and it is October third.
Uh, October third at six thirty P M.
Okay.
And give me the one you just sent me back, this for Justin, maybe we have that, Justin. Okay, um, just, uh, I asked, there was some concern, uh, that was brought to my attention about, um, the way we handle our selectmen meetings, and I just, uh, asked Lean to reach out to Municipal Association for a readout on it, 'cause I was not, uh, fully, uh, read up on it, and, uh, we got Legal Services Council at, um, NHMA, said this about, um, members of the select board. I'm gonna read it, "A member of the select board is allowed to participate fully in a meeting remotely, either via video, conference call, or some other method." Smoke signals not included, including the ability to vote. "As long as there is a quorum of select board members present in the, in person, any remotely participating members can fully participate and vote." This is covered directly in the statute under RSA ninety-one dash alpha colon sub paragraph two. So, the bottom line is, if you're ill, you need to stay home, but you can be by telephone, you're fully, you're fully authorized to vote, participate in any meeting.
If there's a quorum present.
If there's a quorum present, now, we have to have at least two present. So, if two of us are unsick, the meeting's off.
Yeah, I've had a couple of pretty serious colds over the last month, and, uh, didn't feel I wanted to bring it into the rest of the board, especially, you know, three of us trying to run the town government here.
So, and I think is, and just, I, I think it adds some clarity, so at least we're, we're, we're straight where we, we should be.
Yeah.
Okay.
What did you wanna say?
Just nice info to know that we can participate fully and still have a vote, if there is something pressing that we need to vote on.
But the thing is, in the past, we've always had courtesy where if there's something controversial, we'll defer it to the other person that's back. And if there's something still controversial and your connection's bad and you don't feel you can communicate, we can defer things at upon request, unless it's, uh, a major problem. Okay, I'm gonna close, uh, mailbox items, and I just wanna, okay, I'll hold off my comments, uh, I'll have a comment now, I'm gonna open up here.
I was, I was gonna speak about my road, it's funny you have other people.
Well, the thing is, we had a pretty heavy, uh, rain.
Well, yeah, okay, but it's been happening all year, and as he'll attest to, they went to check on my house while I was gone, and it's jaw breaking, getting in and out. And, so, yes, uh, Tuesday, I, I understand it rained very hard Tuesday night. Tuesday, I filled it in because you just can't drive in and out without ruining your vehicle. I filled it all in, and it rained Tuesday night, and there it is again, and it happens every time it rains, not just the heavy rain, it just keeps washing out.
Could you please ask, uh, the road agent to take a look at it?
I used to have it go into my driveway and I was shoveling it out.
Right.
And now, I can't, you know, little cars have a hard time getting in my driveway.
That's number three, okay, and he's gonna, we'll have the road agent to get a look at.
Yeah, I heard about that one three, four years ago, remember?
I recall.
I haven't asked you guys about this.
Yeah, and it's, uh.
I'm telling you, if you look at that road when you come up my road, you can see it pitches to my side. The drainage is on the opposite side, but all the water comes across, once it gets up to Arlene Little's house, it all crosses the road and comes down my side, and washes everything out.
I don't, I cannot give you an answer, 'cause I don't know.
Right, well, well, you've been there.
Yeah, I ain't been there, and the thing is, I, you have to go slow, but until you.
Yeah, exactly.
driveway, I know that, and if you go fast, you're just gonna lose your front end.
Yep, exactly.
Uh, we'll have, let, let them take another ride out there, I want that road agent to see if you can do something.
I do know they did, they did re-pitch part of it once, not a hundred percent, but they did do one. I'm telling you, Dave, you, I'm sure you have a good enough eye, if you look at that. No, I know it is, but they did, they did correct some of it, 'cause it was worse a few years back. Yeah, right, but it's all washed out, and now it's, it just keeps washing out. No, I'm not saying it's not, I do know they did attempt to bring some of it back the other way.
It's an action item for our road agent, okay?
Yeah, I think Jeff has made the comment in the past that the road, the dirt roads are, are constant, um, maintenance.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, right, but my point is, there's a good drainage on that side that we're not using, you know? It doesn't make sense to run the water this way if the drainage is on that side. And you can see it actually washes right down the middle of the road to my side, and then it goes down, it washes everything out. 'Cause I remember it was better for a little while, not that long, it lasted me six months. Right, it didn't last long.
Yeah. Okay, so noted, we will get the, uh, road agent out there again, take a peek at it.
Okay, I mean, at least leave me a pile of dirt so I can fill it in once in a while.
It's a minimum. What about, what about, uh, instead of dirt, uh, gravel?
You put load of stone in there, that's all, it's, that doesn't.
Can you go with bigger riffraff styles?
How about that glass? Nice, that. How about you pave that, just that section? I know. I'd like my dirt road paved too. I don't want the whole road paved, just that section, so I can get in and out.
Okay, so noted.
Siordette gave, when, years ago, you know, you had to get a driveway permit when you get your host permit, you know? And Siordette came out and looked at it and said, it was ridiculous to put a cover here, he said, it's gonna all drain on that side, don't bother with that. So, I ne- never did, and I never had troubles up until maybe five or six years ago, ever since then, it's been constant.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's been a, I know there's been a lot of, um, timber harvesting up the road from you.
No, it's not that.
Across the street.
No, it's not that, no.
Too far to.
It just depends how they. Got nothing to do with it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but as a minimum, we can get some dirt up there for you.
Something, something, yeah.
Okay, mention that too, please. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, just don't tell them I said to do that.
You're blaming me on that one, I'm gonna blame line on that one. Okay, um, Chief, you're on next.
I just, I have a few quick, uh, comments for, for public comment. Um, I've been hearing and seeing a lot of complaints about, uh, Page's Corner. Obviously, that's been a hot topic for years, um, but I just wanted to let the board know, and I, I, I can't remember if I mentioned this, but all of the DOT correspondents, when we had the public hearing, our response letter, their response letter, we actually made a, uh, page on our website that has all public facing documents related to Page's Corner, so.
Because we're right up there on the queue, so that's not very.
We're number one.
Yeah.
We're number one in the ten-year plan, um, but if, if the board or Lean, if, if you get a complaint, refer them to me, refer them to our website, because we have the conceptual plans, we have DOT's response letter, everything, and.
Some of the nickel comments have been really derogatory, saying like, when, like, people complain, when will anything be done there?
Exactly.
Why doesn't the town fix that?
Right, yeah, right.
It's a state road.
Exactly.
Yeah, I know.
But we've been, we've been pushing to stay.
We have.
Are on a level to get it.
I do have a comment.
Sure.
Uh, you know, I'm sure you hear this all the time, I was stopped at, at, uh, last Saturday morning, heading towards Concord, so I stopped, one of the few people who does, and there were three cars somewhere went right through.
Yeah.
Three of them in a row.
Wow.
I didn't have a chance to move.
We, we write citations up there, and one of the comments, just so the, the board knows our stance, one of the comments we often see, how come the the P E doesn't just sit up there all the time? I can tell you definitively, when we sit there, people are looking at the cruiser and not paying attention to the intersection. And it causes more issues by us sitting there than us not sitting there.
I've done that myself.
And, and, and we're all guilty of it, I've done it myself too.
Looking at the cruiser.
Yeah, and, and, you know.
There wasn't hidden in the dental office.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
They're normally on, and you, you're looking at them instead of paying attention to oncoming traffic.
That's right, that's right, so we try to be very selective of when we sit there, we monitor it, but when we sit there, you can see people looking at the cruiser and not paying attention to the intersection.
And people are turning right in front of your cruiser, they're very, uh, very deceiving.
So, it's, it's a tricky thing, but we wanted to be transparent with the town's efforts and let the citizens know that, hey, we hear your concerns, we're taking it seriously, obviously, the, the board is taking it seriously, we had that public hearing, we sent that response letter, but everything is saved right on our website.
Could you prepare a, um, just like a one sentence, uh, like a Page's Corner update? A link that Lean could put on her page, so she clicks it, it goes right to that page.
Yep, yep, I would be happy to.
You know, and it's not gonna stop, 'cause when they do decide, okay, we're coming here, it's this year.
Yeah.
When they do the eminent domain to get the circle to the size they need on that size road, we're gonna hear it on the other.
Of course we are, and, and my motto, and, and Joe Millioto told me when I took over, you can't make everybody happy.
No.
So, whether it's a four-way slot or roundabout, whatever, take your pick, not everyone's gonna be happy. But DOT did a study, and they said, as you know, the safest long-term option is a roundabout. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that's the safest option.
And the second safest is what we already have.
Right, right, which is crazy to think.
Right.
But, yeah, that's kinda where we're at, but I will send it to Lean so it can be on the town's, town site.
Just help spread the word more.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna put something in my annual report as well, um, 'cause I, I see that stuff.
Yeah, because, again, the blogs, uh.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of these people are new, newly moved here.
Right.
And so I don't blame them, they don't know what's going on, but, uh, that was one of my pet peeves when I first came on the board, and, and it was embraced, you embraced it with me.
Yeah.
And it was years ago, we had that meeting with DOT when.
Yeah.
And, uh, the gentleman from the planning, the New Hampshire Regional Planning.
Yeah.
He worked with us to, to get us through the system.
Yep.
And that is, what, what we're doing is, we're working the system, make it work for us.
We are, and we're number one in the ten-year plan, we're, we're right at the top of the list, so when that ten-year plan materializes is yet to be seen, but we are in the queue.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's the best we can do considering.
Really made her at the top of the list, to be honest with you.
It's a dangerous intersection, but it really is.
Well, the thing is, the only thing that makes it more dangerous, and that makes it become urgent, is that, so we don't wish it upon anybody.
All right. But you look, you look at, at different roads like that one, two oh two and nine going through Hellsboro, and that's a lot more dangerous road than this is, and we're, we're number one in the queue, there's intersections up there. Yeah, Route nine is really bad.
Don't, don't give them any ideas, we wanna stay number one.
Um, the other thing I wanted to just bring up, uh, first, I wanted to publicly thank Lean, um, because when I submit for a grant, um, that's all well and good, but when we submit for reimbursement, there's a lot of paperwork behind the scenes that her and her office staff have to process, so thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, I put together a document, I'm gonna try and publish next week, but basically, it's been a really good grant year, and we've been very, very blessed and fortunate to get all the stuff we've been getting. I'm kinda gonna break down each grant and what it provides to the town and to the P D, but as far as an approximate dollar value of everything we've gotten, this year alone, we're around thirty-four thousand, uh, five hundred dollars in grants, including the resources that come with the grants and the value of those resources.
Make sure it's all mentioned in the annual report.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, but I, I wanted the taxpayers to see that we are trying to defray these costs and be creative with, uh, with funding, so.
Obviously, extra work for your department to do it, but we get the grants after you apply for it, so it is worthwhile.
At the last meeting last week, I really thought the bicycles were gonna supplant the vehicle.
We, uh, we actually got that grant today, uh, the crime line grant, I went up to the, the golf tournament, formally got the check, S and W, uh, gave us a huge deal on a really nice bike and equipment, so I spent, uh, one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fourteen cents, and the grant was fifteen hundred. So, I, I took it all the way, but.
It's electric bike?
Those are pretty nice.
They are nice, this is a, a nice, nice mountain bike, we got helmets, safety equipment, uniforms for four officers.
So, they can go off the road.
Yeah, yeah, uh, Kimball ponds, um, you know, all the wreck areas, the trails, and then community events as well, so it's gonna be nice, thank you.
Okay, back to the board, I'm gonna go with, uh, Lean first, Tom, Mr., anything for the board?
I have nothing, no.
Okay, David?
Uh, my one thing. In speaking with Bobby over here at Shkoin's office, I told him we would like to use the same paint at least that, um, our painter did for both of these buildings. I think it's a Ben Moore, but if you could reach out to our painter and get these specific paint and type, I told Bobby that we would get that information to him.
Tent, tent to support.
Yeah, everything, that way the building will stay at least.
Look the same.
The same and have the same materials on the outside of it, so.
And we're not asking from the painter, we just want the information.
Yeah, I explained that to him, that is part of the Ben.
There's a lot of different whites. Actually, it's not Ben Moore, he uses Sherwin Williams, I think.
I do too, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I think so, but the thing, let's, let's confirm that.
Yeah, let's confirm, I can't remember beyond, okay.
Okay, any else, Dave?
Nope, that's it for me.
Justin? Okay, uh, we had a, in my opinion, I thought we had a great election day. Um, I thought, um, it was a long day because it was a primary, and we had a lot of races to look at, but I found four, four groups of people I like to recognize, and, uh, they're not here, but publicly, I wanna recognize the new moderator, uh, John Trotter. He did an outstanding job and, uh, kept it under control, and it was great. I like also recognized a former moderator, Fred Mullins, he stayed the entire day to help out, and he left, uh, like, one fifteen, one twenty in the morning. I like to expressly also recognize the new deputy town clerk, Jennifer Comier. She was outstanding, she, she was on her, uh, game with numbers and making it go smoothly. And then lastly, I, above all, I think I'd like to thank the numerous volunteers who stayed and counted. We didn't, they didn't leave till about eleven-thirty to close to midnight.
Yeah.
And, uh, those volunteers, we could not do it without volunteers, and, uh, I think those volunteers, by counting, make machines look like crap. And, uh, so, uh, we did good, I thought the numbers were great. Um, when we counted votes, the number of votes matched what Linda and the, the, when we checked in, it was so smooth, it was a great election, albeit too long. So.
And how about your pro town, Mike, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, also, uh, Justin appointed a, a selectman pro town. Yeah, I just wanna, uh, also, um, uh, Justin pointed out, uh, selectmen pro town, I just wanna make sure that, um, in the past, uh, we do not get paid for it, 'cause we get our yearly stipend, you might say, or yearly pay, and town employees, per se, uh, if they're in salary, they don't get anything extra, um, however, uh, in the past, we have paid the selectmen pro town, and there was some discussion at the meeting, at that meeting that night, uh, they said, no, the selectmen pro town doesn't get paid, I challenge that, and the thing is, for the, he doesn't get any remuneration, so he should get paid appropriately, the same rate as any, uh, election official for those hours. So, Justin, I'm gonna ask yours, if you'd be so kind to contact, you know, selectmen pro town, Mr. Barb Knopf, Bob Knopf, and make sure he submitted the hours and asked for reimbursement, I know he wanted to get reimbursement.
Okay.